Welcome. Good to see everybody. I see so many good familiar faces. We appreciate you supporting the Bloomington Chamber and Conversations with Kim. This is a special one. We get to be right here at Civic Plaza. And how many people? Is this the first time in council chamber room? All right, John. We got to get you here on a Monday night sometime. That's great. And we're excited to have a conversation with these three. But I just want to tell you about a few things that are happening with the Chamber. We continue to have some great momentum as we are getting ready for our strategic planning session in April with our board. We're going to take a look at 12 months. And we're, you know, the business landscape is changing and shifting, and we want to be nimble and perhaps not lock ourselves into three years. But we're definitely going to look at this coming year and partially into next year, what's going to be our real focus, what my focus is going to be. Definitely going to continue with these events. I've been asked if we're going to do cocktails with Kim maybe sometime. And I think that's a great idea. In the evening, though, probably. Or we could come here. Jamie's all, he'll set up a Bloody Mary bar for us. And bring a lid. Yes, exactly. So, once again, we do have some great things that are happening. Golf tournament coming up. So we front-load in the beginning of the year our two biggest events for the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And we are excited to have many of our sponsors here in the room for the golf tournament. In fact, our premier sponsor, Mall of America, Jill and Dan are here. Thank you so much. And that, we still have some foursome opportunities available. Maybe you guys find a fourth, and that could be a lot of fun.
And we'd be out there until 11:30.
Well, this is if the snow melts in time for June 18th, right? Out at Minnesota Valley Country Club. So see me if you want to talk about golf. And, well, I'll give you some information about what's happening with this event next month. You're going to be excited to hear about what we've got planned for you next month. So, isn't this a great space, once again? Continuing with this theme of all the good things that are happening with Bloomington. How many of you were at State of the City? Wow. Wow. Yes, the Gene and Jamie show was fantastic again. There, what's impressive, this was my first State of the City, and listening to the wonderful things that are happening here. People want to live here, play here, work here, raise families here. Many of you do that. And so it's just great to play off of that because the momentum that these three are experiencing, having been on the job since January, I think it's going to make for a fun conversation because you might want to pick out some questions from the State of the City that you have. Certainly, you're going to hear a lot less from me today because this is really all about them, and it's all about you getting to know these three. So let's just go ahead and start. I've got Nathan, I'm going in alphabetical order. I've got Nathan Coulter is here. He is a new council member-at-large. We have Sean, Patrick Martin. What is my alphabet today? Patrick Martin, District Four, won a very close election in District Four. So excited to see you today. And Sean Nelson in District Two. Sean is here, a business owner, so he has some very unique perspective. And you'll hear about them starting now.
All right, John, go.
Yeah, if you guys would each take a couple of minutes, just a brief introduction, and then we can get into some nitty-gritties about your election, your race, your focus, that kind of thing. But just a quick introduction.
Okay. I'll jump in. And, yeah, I'll be very brief and quick. Sean Nelson, I've been a resident of Bloomington for over 18 years. My wife, Ann, and I have two daughters, Stacia and Emma. We live over by Jefferson High School. I am a small business owner and a member of the Bloomington Chamber. My primary business is residential remodeling on a company called New Spaces. Got a little bit smaller company called Blue Sky Skylights that helps people add daylight to their houses. I've been very actively engaged, particularly in the housing industry, for a number of years. And I think that's an issue that is important to all of us, as well as the rest of the council also. So I think something we'll probably all touch on a little bit more today.
I'll go next. Like Kim said, my name's Nathan Coulter. I am a council member-at-large, so if you live in Bloomington, I'm the one you can complain to. I've lived, I've actually lived in Bloomington my whole life. Grew up here and went to Ridgeview, Oak Grove, Olson, Jefferson. I live about five minutes west of here on Upton, just north of Old Shakopee. By day, I'm a legislative assistant for one of our state centers from Bloomington here. Yeah, I think that's about it for me, and we'll get into more later, I think.
Patrick Martin, as was mentioned. I'm right over, kind of the east side of town is District Four. I've spent about five years altogether in the city, spent my very early years, just living right across the street from Mall of America. It's one of my youngest memories that I've got altogether is watching them lower the AC units onto the building with helicopters. It was still one of the coolest things I've ever seen. Left for my school-age years and off to college, and then when it was time to kind of settle down, purchase a home, I actually bought a house about a block from where I initially grew up, so I didn't end up far out of the nest. And I've spent my entire career to this point in the nonprofit sector doing fund development, first for Salvation Army Homeless Shelters around town, and now for Children's Cancer Research Fund just over on Busch Lake Road.
Great. Impressive resumes and great energy that y'all bring. Thank you. You know, we are really grateful to have the chance to speak with you here this morning. And I think, let's just start out with, you know, share the reasons that you decided to run. Good reasons, scary reasons, exciting reasons. And then let's start there, and then we can just work our way down in your experience so far.
Same order? I can start?
Yeah.
All right. Biggest reason I ran is I love Bloomington. We love this community. We've put our roots down here, and I wanted to give back to the community, use some of my learning from my business career, from what I've done, the legislator on a state and national level, particularly in housing. The other thing that I saw just within the community is we've got so many great things going on. We've done great development in the South Loop, Penn America, Normandale Lakes, that type of thing. But I looked at sort of our neighborhood areas, a lot of our commercial areas in those, our infrastructure, our parks and things like that. And candidly, it's getting a little bit older. And it's time to maybe rethink some of those things and figure out what we want to do to make them right for the future for families that are moving in now. And I want to be part of that conversation. And I'm very excited that we're having that conversation within the community at the council level. So that's really why I ran.
Well, I had hoped to be the youngest member of the city council, but thanks to Landslide Martin and his six-vote win, that didn't happen. But I mean, like I said, I've lived in Bloomington my whole life, and I know what this community has meant to me. And I didn't actually mention it, but I went to school and I majored in music education and political science. And I actually wanted to be a music teacher originally because of the experience I'd had in our Bloomington public schools and the music program that they have there. And, you know, I ran because I wanted to serve my community. I wanted to make things better in this city. And I think there is, you know, a lot of what, I agree with everything that Sean said, that there is so much potential here in Bloomington as the fourth-largest city in our state, as the largest city outside of, you know, Minneapolis-St. Paul in the metro area. I think there is a lot of potential for us to be a real leader and do some things that I think are really going to make a big difference for the folks who live here. And my background is, in addition to working at the legislature, primarily in campaigns. And so I thought, you know, this is, I had worked for a lot of other people and talked about what a lot of other people wanted to do. And I kind of just had this thought, you know, I want to, I want to say what I want to say and do what I want to do. And it's just, you know, everyone asks me, "How's it going on the council?" And my first answer has always been, "It's a ton of fun." It just, it's so much fun getting to work on the, on the issues here in Bloomington.
You might want to warm up those pipes. I might put you on the spot for a performance.
A little early for that.
We'll see.
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of the points that were just made. Before running for council, I served on both the Advisory Board of Health and Parks Arts and Recreation Commission. And it was, and that was kind of born out of, as I was settling down and getting ready to start a family here in Bloomington, if I was going to be really using as a platform to raise a strong family, this amazing city, how can I invest back in it? How can I help to put the community on a trajectory that, when I'm sitting there in the parking lot watching develop, a development in the South Loop with my three-year-old, how can I, how can I give the community a boost and be able to perpetuate the cycle that's given me so, so much? And also, just generally, Bloomington, while we're an incredibly strong city, is really a microcosm for the country as a whole. Through the service on those commissions, we saw, as Sean had mentioned, we're kind of an aging community. And the pockets of population growth that we do have tend to be in our more diverse neighborhoods, our more low-income neighborhoods. And if we're not investing in these areas now, putting programs into place to make these families feel invited and a part of the community, we're not going to have that engine of growth long-term. So that is, it was a little bit of a selfish reason, just as I suddenly was thinking in a longer-term mindset, how can I help this city be as strong as it was when I was growing up here myself?
That's great. Thank you for that. I think we have a good flavor of what has driven you to be in these seats. So since being sworn in in January, think of these three things. What has surprised you? What has challenged you? And what has delighted you the most since being sworn in? Either any order.
I can take it up.
I guess my initial surprise was, it was kind of a surprise and a delight. I had come into this assuming it was going to be kind of a squeaky wheel gets the grease situation, especially in terms of either constituents that had had long-running issues and were not afraid to be super vocal about it. But the delight of that has also been that in reaching out across the community universally, whether it's folks that are very excited to be vocal or folks that have never attended a council meeting before, once you start that dialogue, everybody is interested and engaged in moving the city forward. That once you're starting from a place of shared expectations, that everybody's coming with good intentions, that everybody wants Bloomington to be as strong as possible, suddenly the walls come down and a dialogue starts that has really been heartening to see, especially in such a toxic national political climate. To be able to talk about your neighborhood park, to be able to talk about your neighborhood school, bring things back to a very kind of concrete in your neighborhood level, and see progress move forward is, it's rare these days, and it's great to see.
Let's see, I'm trying to, it was surprised, delighted, and challenged?
Surprise and challenge.
Okay. You know, I think the, let's see, I think the thing that has surprised me the most is just, you know, I, so like I said, I work up at the legislature, and I was kind of coming into it looking through that lens, where, you know, you have a committee process. And each committee looks at sort of different aspects of legislation, but you don't have that on a seven-person city council, right? So every meeting is every step of the legislative process. It's, you know, it's the policy discussions, it's different policy discussions, it's the finance discussions. And so it's been, it's been a decided adjustment to kind of just think about things that way. Let's see, was surprised, delighted? I think in terms of what's delighted me the most, I would echo a lot of what Patrick has said. I think, you know, folks in Bloomington really value this city as a community. They really value what we offer and what, you know, what their neighbors and what everyone brings to the table. And, you know, to a T, every person that I've talked to since I've been on the council even before that has, you know, really talked about how much they love living in Bloomington, how, how great it is to be here. I think, for me, the biggest, let's see, the biggest challenge, I would say, is probably sort of similar to the surprise. I think, you know, it's a lot of stuff. You know, it turns out, city of 88,000 people, there's a lot of things going on. And it's just, it's, like I said, it's a ton of fun. I'm really enjoying it, but it's a lot of stuff.
I think the biggest challenge is easy. It's a thousand-page packet that you get on Friday and has to be prepared for Monday.
It's the reality.
Yeah. So just put that out there. Going back a little bit before I actually got out of the council, probably the biggest surprise and delight for me was the reception that I received, and I think that they would echo this, when we went out and just door-knocked and talked to people in the community and found ways to connect with people. We're all very much aware of the culture, the, what's going on nationally and how it's very difficult for people to talk together. It has been so nice that it's relatively nonpartisan, it's, people love this community, people want to work together to find solutions. And that has just been tremendously gratifying to see that that's the type of community we have, that we all pull together, that even if we disagree, we do it very, very professionally and nicely. I think the biggest challenge going forward is just making sure that we, at the city level, as well as individually, are doing everything we can to communicate with the residents in the city, the businesses in the city, so that they understand what's coming up before it gets there. I think there's a lot of people that see it come before the city council, and they're like, "Oh, those people already had their minds made up," and don't realize the enormous effort that the staff, that the council, that our commissions have put in leading up to that. And I got a flavor of that because I actually was sworn in in November due to kind of a quirk of the special election. And the end of the year is basically finishing up the work of the council that year. So I got to come in and vote on, you know, fun and exciting things like fees and rates and the levy and things like that, that the council had worked on for a long time and had held a lot of input into and had really modified and things like that. So I just, I think always getting that message out to the community of how they can engage, how they can be involved earlier in the process is, I think, one of the big challenges that we're working on. And going back to last year, I really want to applaud the previous council for their efforts to expand the Bloomington briefing to a monthly publication starting this fall. I know that's widely used, and I just, I think it's a great part of our communication effort, so.
That's great, everybody. So you've been here for a couple of months. I want you to picture a year from now, after, you know, going through the numerous, you know, Monday night meetings, the study groups, the listening sessions, the thousand-page read-throughs. You know, what do you see as something that you would have accomplished a year from now that is important to you? And then maybe three years from now, if you can think about that?
I guess, in the one-year timeframe, kind of a project that I was really passionate about when I was out knocking on doors was, as I had mentioned earlier, inclusivity in who we're bringing into our community programming, especially in some of those younger parts of town where a lot of that population growth is. I'm really heartened that already, we have a couple of programs over the summer that provide character building and structured time for kids out of school, The View and the Mini View, they're called, among a couple of others. And the issue was, it was online registration, and it would fill up in like under three minutes. Because parents that were able to take the day off of work would sit in front of their computer and hit F5 and then immediately click register. So while that's great, it was a tremendous, it is a tremendous asset for our community. For the parents that really need that time to have their kids in those programs or they're out at work for the day, aren't the ones who can take off work or don't have easy internet connection at home, they're the least likely to be able to quickly register for the program. And already, the Parks Department has made changes to allow Bloomington residents, in particular, a little bit more time to register for those programs, a better shot to get their kids involved. And while that's a small step, building momentum like that over the course of this first year means, as we're heavily investing financial resources in revamping our park system, as Sean had mentioned earlier, kind of that aging infrastructure, we're making sure that the next generation of Bloomingtonians have an equal shot at being able to take advantage of it at an early age and use it long-term. And then I guess, over the three-year, I'll just briefly say, it's also making sure that, especially these younger families, can afford to both live and work in Bloomington. Because we can get them involved, but if they're priced out of the city, that doesn't do a lot of good for us long-term. So if we can have some concrete studies and data in place on whether that's zoning tweaks we can make in terms of stuff like floor area ratio or the size of apartment units in order to be able to put some downward pressure on costs overall, those are studies that are in the works now. But I think there's a lot of things we can do around the edges to try and take away that cost burden, so that all the gains we're making in the immediate term with getting people invested in the community aren't lost in the medium term because of a hot housing market.
Well, in kind of a similar vein to Patrick, I think what I'd like to see from a year from now and what I'd like to see three years from now are very similar. Because I think my major focuses have been, you know, things that we just kind of need to keep at. And, you know, one of my, one of my focuses has been just a more sort of open and accessible government, I think particularly with regard to, you know, having these kinds of conversations with elected officials. Just wasn't last Saturday, but the Saturday before, I had what I called a community conversation right in this room. You know, there were some folks there who were not related to me, so I considered that a success. And, you know, just kind of, I, you know, not really, I didn't have much of an agenda. I talked about a couple of in-the-news things, but otherwise, it was just a very free-flowing conversation. And I know, you know, some of you folks were here, or some of you folks here were there for that as well. You know, I think to what Sean said, a lot of times, folks kind of feel like, "I had no idea this was coming, and now it's before the council." And I think, you know, with, particularly with some things that have been in the news, whether it's the proposed water park or Highland Greens or the Kelly Farm, you know, folks have felt a little bit almost ambushed. And I think we can do a better job of just being proactive in terms of that kind of communication. For myself, I have also been focusing on who we recruit and who serves on city boards and commissions. You know, the reality is, we are a diversifying city, and you wouldn't necessarily know it by looking at some of the boards and commissions that we have. And so I think, you know, just doing a better job of making sure that the folks who are involved in the policy discussions are more reflective of the community as a whole. And that, you know, there are recruitment sides, but there are also, there are things that we can do in terms of how boards and commissions operate that can make, I think, make things a little more accessible for folks. And then, excuse me, the last thing that I would bring up is, and Patrick alluded to this as well, is the affordable housing crisis. And, I mean, the reality is that this is a crisis, and it's something we need to keep in the forefront of our minds with everything that we do. And it's not going to be a one-shot solution. It's not going to be the kind of thing where we can say, "All right, we're going to pass this ordinance or make this investment, and the problem is going to be solved." And I've been involved with a group that's focused on naturally occurring affordable housing, and we're going to, that group will bring some recommendations to an upcoming study session. But we, I mean, it, the more you dive into it, the more you see how central it is to people's lives and how the ripples just don't stop on this one. So we, you know, and this is, this is a city of Bloomington issue, it's a metro-region issue, it's a state of Minnesota issue, and a national issue. And we just, we need to get to work.
I'm just going to jump in on what Nathan said there. I think in the one-year timeframe, I'd really like to have some better policy direction, strategy to address the housing needs of the community, both on the workforce affordable side, but also on the senior side. Patrick alluded to, you know, our aging population. We have a number of people in the community that are looking for a transition place and maybe aren't finding that within that, but don't want to leave Bloomington. So how do we address those needs as well? How do we continue to attract young families in there so we have strong schools? All of those types of things. And it's a huge issue. It's very complicated. I think we're just starting to roll up our sleeves on that issue, and it's something that I would really like to have more of a defined strategy at the city level within the next year. The other part would relate to our Parks Arts and Recreation and taking a look at how we go forward with that, what changes we might want to make. I see a lot of what we're doing, you know, in terms of investments is fixing what we have now, making some tweaks here and there, like pickleball, which is, which is something that the community is really asking for a lot more of, which I think is great. But taking a more of a comprehensive look, wrapping that into the conversation about the community center, what is the role that the community center should play? How do we augment that with our other facilities throughout the community, that sort of thing? So I think the time is now for that, particularly because of the community center conversation. The three-year is very easy for me to answer. I hope to be here in three years. So, I have to run again in 19, so I only get two years. I assume that's because it's going to take these guys longer to catch up on everything.
Good answer.
So, but, yeah. The quirk, I got in two months earlier and I get out two years earlier. I don't know why that's fair, but that's the way it works in District Two, so.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you all so much. So you look at our audience, and we have large employers, we have small business owners, and we have medium-sized businesses that are represented by leaders in their, in their companies. In the Chamber of Commerce, we focus on the business community and being the voice of advocacy and connectivity. And correct me, somebody, if I'm wrong, Jamie, I believe the business community makes up about 53% of the tax base? Okay, I got it. And so talk, talk to us about how we can work with you, how you're, you know, prepared to represent us in these discussions. You know, housing certainly makes a huge difference to all of us making sure that we have a great workforce right here in Bloomington and those kinds of things. Transit, transportation, very important to the Chamber, as well as just general workforce. And we've got less here from the school system and, you know, those two fine schools that are generating, you know, kids that are coming out. How can we continue to get them in the pipeline to work at some of these great businesses? And we've got Dick here on the school board also. Talk to us about the business connectivity. Anybody?
I'll go first on this one. I've been kind of avoiding going first by sitting in the middle. You know, I will say, having grown up here, I think one of the real strengths of Bloomington has always been the business community, that, you know, for businesses in Bloomington, whether it's the Mall of America, Wally's Roast Beef, or anywhere in between, I love Wally's, by the way, that, that businesses have always recognized how important it is to invest in the community, that, that, you know, folks who do business here in Bloomington get that strong, a strong community is good for business. And I think, you know, just, a lot of it is going to just be being present, having the conversations, showing up, making, making your voice heard, listening to other folks. And, you know, I, I've worked on a lot of campaigns, I've worked up at the legislature, and I, I'm still one of those people who believes that good policy is good politics. And, you know, I, maybe, you know, maybe after four years on the council, I'll have my mind changed on that too. But, you know, I think, you know, being able to give and take and have the conversations and, you know, recognize that nobody's going to get their way 100% of the time, but that we all have a stake in the future, and that we all have a stake even in some of the less sort of obvious things. You know, Sean talked about parks improvements, you know, our water infrastructure is going to be a huge thing moving forward. Everybody's talking about their rates going up, and, you know, that's one of those kind of boring things that city government has to do. But, you know, you folks know how important that is to getting things done here. So, you know, I would, in a lot of ways, I think my message is just kind of, keep doing what you're doing, have conversations. I'm, you know, I like to make myself very available. I generally try and get back to folks who email me within, you know, within 24 hours. But I, you know, I think you just, you got to show up, and I'm always happy to have conversations. So, you know, feel free to reach out to me. I, you know, I don't, I try not, I try to make it a habit not to speak for other people, particularly other folks on the council. But, you know, I don't think there's anything so awful that it can't be talked about.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in there. As you had mentioned, housing, transit, and I would put that in the larger context of what does our business community need in terms of overall workforce development? Obviously, our economy is going through one of the biggest periods of transition since we invented steam power. And the unintended consequences of that and the unintended needs coming out of the back end of that transition, the city that can have foresight, that can start planning now, that can put the infrastructure in place, is going to be the city that reaps the rewards out of that transition. But city government, we can't take potshots in the dark at what that transition's going to look like. It's going to be absolutely critical that, as our business community is seeing trends in either the training they need, the type of housing, the type of transit the younger workforce wants, we won't have all that data input unless we're in part receiving it from our businesses. And I think, in particular, there was an item that was included on a consent agenda that I'm really wishing I would have pulled out to give a little more praise to. But for example, Normandale College, we just signed an agreement to include more of their nursing, nurses in training to work with our Public Health Department, to get on-the-ground training, working with families, finding out what community need is. And while a program like that isn't revolutionary, if we didn't have the business community providing input to say, "These are the type of positions that we really see being a benefit long-term," we wouldn't, we wouldn't have these types of agreements, and we wouldn't be getting out ahead of the curve. So, yeah, I would just say, let us know, let us know who you need, and let's work together on getting them into Bloomington.
Just quickly, picking up on what Patrick said there about the nursing program, I would love to see us expand those types of programs throughout the city, find ways to connect students into the various aspects of what the city does, be it public works, finance, those types of things, have, you know, maybe more internship opportunities and things like that. I think that's a very low-cost, easy thing we can do to work on, training, education, that type of thing. With regards to the business community, I'm a small business owner, a member of a number of chambers, on the board of the Burnsville Chamber, been very active and engaged in the business community. And I think really, the approach that I take is from the business owners that I know, the business leaders within organizations that I know, they want to do the right thing. They care about the community, they're doing it because they have a passion for their industry, for the communities in which communities in which they work. And so we need to bring them to the table when we have decisions before us. You know, we're talking a lot about affordable housing. I've reached out to developers, to realtors, to multifamily associations, all of those, to try to get their input into that conversation as well, because I know these people. I know that they want to do the right thing in our community. I know that they are challenged to do it. They, you know, we had a great conversation at the study session with McGough about the challenges that they're having in terms of getting an affordable component into their developments, and they're trying to make incremental progress. So what can we do to help them get there quicker? And things like that, I think, are part of the conversation. But I want to make sure that the city isn't sitting back going, okay, business community, you need to do this, because we need to have a more of a dialogue. It needs to be more interactive than that. And so I've been reaching out and doing those types of things. And I think that's just in general, the way I work, so.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate that, because I'm very proud of the connection that the Bloomington Chamber has directly with the City of Bloomington. I want to recognize Jamie Verbrugge, our city manager, who is very engaged with the Chamber, as well as council member Tim Bussi, veteran council member Tim Bussi, who sits on our Chamber Board. And so they are also here today in support. So I'm really going to, we're at 8:30. I'd like to open this up for a discussion with all of you. I'm sure some of you brought questions, and maybe some questions have come to mind. Definitely, you know, ask away. And we do have a microphone. I get that going again. Ashley, could I ask some assistance, please? Have you all met Ashley Iba? Ashley Iba is our brand-new employee. She is our new sales membership manager, operating out of our Bloomington office. And she is kicking butt already.
All right.
Absolutely. Do you want to pass that around? Who's got a question? All right, Robert.
Thanks. Robert Freeman from Health Pontus. I heard one of you mention the water park. I saw my Mall of America friends in here, so I'm sure they're interested in hearing that.
I knew that was going to be the first question.
This discussion, too, but, this is on. But what are your thoughts? And when you kind of approach a project of kind of this size, and, you know, well, how do you go about kind of making the decision?
I can jump in, please.
Nobody's jumping to take this one first.
So, there's a few things that I'm thinking about with regards to this project. I mean, obviously, it's, the original ask is a significant investment from the city and things like that. And so, you know, part of it is that I think there's a proper role for the city to play in terms of providing amenities that the community wants, use, and benefits from. So to what extent would this project provide opportunities for our residents, for our businesses, to use that discounted rates, things like that? What does that look like? What is the amenity side of that equation? I think the other part is that it is absolutely appropriate for the city to be looking at economic development, working with our business community to drive development. I know we do that in the South Loop, Pan American, throughout the city. And, you know, a lot of those projects, when I look at those, you know, the city investment tends to be somewhere between 10% to 15% on those projects. So what other development would this investment potentially drive within that area? The other part of it is, you know, as it's set right now, would the city be the only one making actual investments with the other stuff? If you build it, they will come. I would be much more comfortable if there were commitments for some of the other development, the other hotels, things like that, that we knew if the city, if this makes sense for the city, for, for all those other reasons to do this, that we knew we had contracts in place to do these other developments, so we could take and leverage the city money for real, actual development. So those are a lot of the issues that I'm looking at in terms of the community, and how this might make sense. I do want to stress, we're very, very early on that. I mean, you know, we've had one study session on it so far. It was mentioned briefly at the end of the joint meeting with the port last week, or earlier this week. I don't know, time flies. So, that's kind of where I'm at. Those are the things I'm looking at in that project.
Yeah, I think I would echo a lot of what, a lot of what Sean said. I think, you know, there are just, there are so many moving pieces. And certainly, we can't deny the impact the mall has in, in the community. And I, you know, I think certainly, we want to make sure the mall continues to be a strong partner and member of the Bloomington community. But I, you know, I tend to look at things from a people perspective. And so my, my first question is, how is this going to affect, how is this going to serve the people who live here in Bloomington? And there are a lot of questions that need to be answered, I think, before that, in terms of the financial investment, in terms of, you know, the overall community impact, how is this gonna, you know, how is this going to affect other local businesses? How is this going to affect our schools? How is this going to affect, you know, other things that we have going on in the City of Bloomington? And I, you know, there are a lot of questions related to, for me, kind of about the, about the specifics of the project. I'm not, I'm not generally one of those people who, who says, well, you know, I think this is a good idea, so I'm going to go with this. You know, to me, very, very often, it comes down to the specifics of how this operates within the environment. And, you know, as an example, you know, the Triple Five brought forward, their example is the water park at the West Edmonton Mall. And, you know, the questions I have, well, Edmonton is, is a little bit different than the Twin Cities metro area, right? Like, Edm, I don't think Edmonton is particularly close to another water park center the way Twin Cities is close to Wisconsin Dells. So how do, you know, so just kind of things like that. I tend to kind of dive into those kinds of specifics. I, you know, I just, I, as Sean said, it is, it would be a fairly significant public investment on the, on the city's side. And to that end, I need, I need to be convinced that it's going to really serve the folks who live in, in the City of Bloomington, and the City of Bloomington as a whole, in a way that's going to justify that amendment, or amendment, investment. I work at the legislature, it's that time of year, you know? So I, you know, there, there are just a great many questions yet that need to be answered.
A lot of the thunder was, was kind of stolen there. There's good points to make. I guess, my, my first reaction, and what I think is important to keep in mind, is Bloomington is the strongest city it is, with the 53% of its tax base supported by businesses, because we haven't been afraid to make bold investments in ideas that could be transformative for our community, like Mall of America, for example. I mean, there's a reason we've added 160 hotel rooms a year for the past 50 years in the city, and it's because we have a strong business community that collaborates with the city, that's able to push forward strategic initiatives that can make a big difference. I think the, what kind of cautions me at this point, and what I'm excited to learn a little bit more about, is, A, what kind of precedent does it set for the city to jump into such a massive project due to financing limitations on the, the private side of a project? Not saying that's, that's a deal breaker, but 10 years from now, are we going to be getting similar proposals? Because the dam has broken to an extent with, if we were to move forward with this. And also, as, as has been mentioned, it kind of just from the strategic side of, should it be an overall goal of the city to generate revenue just for the sake of generating revenue? Or should it be the goal of the city to build a strong business community to support thriving neighborhoods, to support strong families, to generate momentum for the city moving forward? We are incredibly lucky that we have a diverse economy right now that draws people in from across the globe for business meetings, for conferences, to enjoy themselves recreationally. But we need to make sure that our top priority is, is making sure Bloomington residents feel like they have a home here, and that the city's top priority is, is making sure that they're welcome and can prosper right here in our neighborhoods.
And I'll just make a quick note. I realize that Triple Five and the mall and the city talk about projects on a pretty ongoing basis. The media grabbed this one and decided to make this a big deal. So I, I appreciate the conversation, because it is something that, that we're all talking about. But I just wanted to make that note, that there are conversations about great development all the time. Would you say? Okay, I believe that Orville has a question?
Yeah, Orville Philbrandt, residential realtor. And all three of you mentioned about affordable housing. And one of the complaints that I've heard is that a lot of municipalities really add a lot of permit expense onto it, and so it has a detrimental effect to remodelers, or developers, or people are doing a lot of work in the cities. How does Bloomington fall into that category regarding those, what those people would say would be excessive charges?
I can jump in if you, if you want. I think that's going to be part of the conversation as we move forward, is looking at the regulatory cost structure for housing, whether it's keeping existing housing affordable, developing new housing, and things like that. And I think that's on the table, and definitely part of the discussion. I don't have, like, more specifics. Other than, what I can tell you on the residential remodeling side, just from my own business, is Bloomington is affordable in its permits fees. It is extremely quick in getting a permit to you, and frankly, one of the better communities that we work in and with when we do a residential remodeling project. There are much more expensive communities around us, so.
Good perspective.
Yeah.
Just kind of jumping on that, I, I mean, I agree with a, well, a lot of what Sean said in terms of that, absolutely has to be a part of the conversation. I've talked with developers, too, and, and I, I hear that, and I get that. And I, you know, that's, that's your bottom line, right? And I, you know, I think this, this goes to what I talked about earlier in terms of the ripples of this issue, is that it's, you know, it's not, it's easy to kind of, you know, look at it as, well, I've got a hammer, everything's a nail. But there are a lot of different sides to this, right? When we're talking about creation, when we're talking about preservation, you know, there are a lot of different things to that. And so, you know, I think, in terms of making it affordable, you know, when we look at one of our city strategic priorities is, is high-quality service delivery. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, that, that folks generally are satisfied with, with that aspect of the City of Bloomington. But are there ways that we can do that better? Are there ways that we can reduce fees and, and, you know, make it a little easier for folks to, to do business in the city? You know, and I, I, there are, there are a lot of different aspects to this. And I, I think when we talk about affordable housing, and those of you who have heard me talk about this before know that I, to me, and this is maybe not the right thing to say in front of the Chamber of Commerce, but to me, you know, while this is what the market is asking for, this is what the market is looking for, doesn't always carry a lot of weight, because I think the issue of affordable housing is itself a failure of the market. You know, folks are getting priced out of their homes and, excuse me, their homes and apartments because of the market. And so I, I, I think we, we can't just look at this as a market, market-based solution. But likewise, we can't pretend that there aren't market-based solutions out there. I think it is, it does have to be both sides of the equation. And I, you know, I, so I think some of the, the policy, policies, ideas that we're looking at, but also some, there are some, some investment ideas out there that, that are being discussed. And I, more and more, as I dive into this issue, I see that we need to be creative, and we need to be bold. And I, I think, one of the things I mentioned earlier is that there's a lot of potential in Bloomington to do both. And so I'm, I'm really excited to dive into this issue for that reason.
I want to just ask you, we had a Public Affairs Committee meeting where we talked about housing, and we had a discussion about mid-market. So folks that make, maybe they're, they're working here in Bloomington, they're, they're in management in the hospitality industry, and/or manufacturing, and they make too much for affordable housing, but they don't make enough for some of this market-rate luxury housing. You know, talk about, talk about that segment, because those are a lot of folks that, that we're attracting and want to continue to attract.
Yeah. I guess, and that, that kind of gets to the, the point I wanted to make here, is it's, it's an incredibly nuanced issue, which, which is obvious, but there, as Nathan had mentioned earlier, there is no silver bullet. So whether it's looking at regulatory tweaks around things like permitting fees, whether it's zoning in terms of the density of housing, or the type of housing we can put up, or whether it's honest conversations about how can we be more strategic in our, in our subsidization of some of these projects, it's going to be a mix of all three of those things. It's going to be able to tackle it. I, I am incredibly blessed that I've been successful professionally, that I'm at the point where I'm able to buy a single-family home. But I'll be honest, three out of my five best friends that graduated with college degrees moved out of their parents' basements within the last six months, because because of their student loan payments, they couldn't afford a studio apartment. And that's, while there tends to be a stereotype of the folks that are using affordable housing, or looking for subsidization, the fact is, the, the bedrock of our workforce moving forward into the next generation, they're priced out of getting a head start. They're starting eight years behind in building up wealth, and building up equity, because they're, they're saddled with a bag of bricks of debt on their back coming out of school. So it's, I think it's making sure that, that we're honest about the, the mix of approaches that we're taking, and also the mix of types of affordable housing, and the different types of folks that are going to be leveraging those opportunities. If we're not honest about that on the front end, we're not going to have viable solutions on the back.
And one more thing to add to that, too, is, is that it's, it's important to remember that affordable housing exists on a spectrum, right? That, you know, what's, you know, what's affordable, when we talk about affordable housing, a lot of times we talk about percentage of the area median income. So we, you know, we talk about what's affordable to folks at 30, 30 to 50% of AMI, what's affordable to folks at 60% of AMI, and 80% of AMI, and so on. And so I think, you know, that, that needs to be part of the conversation as well. And the other thing that I wanted to mention that has been brought up several times in this conversation is sort of a rent-to-own pipeline. How are we, you know, once we are getting folks into, say, affordable, single-family homes, how are we transitioning, how are we helping them to transition to be able to own that home, and contribute to, you know, the tax base and the economy, and, and community stability in that way as well?
Great.
Can I jump in again, too?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is actually something I've worked on for over a decade. And what, what I like to talk about is kind of what Nathan was talking about, is the spectrum. It's, it's not about necessarily just affordable housing, it's about housing affordability. How do we reduce at all levels of prices, the, the regulatory costs and things like that, that make it difficult to buy a first home, make it difficult to get an apartment, make it difficult to get that little bit larger home as the family grows? All of those price points are important, because if we don't have people moving out of the less expensive houses into a little bit bigger house, we don't have inventory for that young family to buy a house, or a single person to buy a house. So we need to have things at all spectrum of there. And, and, you know, candidly, Minnesota has a very high cost, regulatory cost, nearly 30% for a new unit of housing is due to regulations, not just city, but state, federal, and things like that. But our neighbors in Wisconsin, you know, it's much less. And I, you know, I think they got pretty decent housing in Wisconsin, too. It's, it's not, it's not horrible and awful, but, you know, our football team is...
It is, Wisconsin.
So, never mind. But it's football team, I think. The, it is, so it's something that we really have to take a look at. And I think it's, it's partly the fee structure of the permits, but I think Patrick touched on it, too. I think it's ordinance, I think it's, you know, density, minimum sizes, accessory dwelling units. How do we unlock the potential of people to maybe have multi-generational housing without just having your kid in your basement, but in a way that makes sense for, for that? Or, you know, I've talked to a number of people that would like to rent out their basement because they don't use it. They maybe put a little kitchenette down there, and, you know, somebody else could use that unit. It's very difficult in Bloomington sometimes to do that, you know? I do think, you know, do we ever get into the conversation that Minneapolis is getting into in terms of their density, and, and four units on a lot, and things like that? I mean, that is going to, we're going to get pushback if we start to have those conversations, because one of the big things that I hear from people that they love about Bloomington is the character of our low-density neighborhoods. But there's a cost impact of low-density neighborhoods that we need to have that conversation. Like Nathan said, we can't be afraid to have that conversation and come up with some solutions. You know, some things may not move forward. They may not be right for Bloomington, but other things will move forward. And we will work very hard to address this issue at, at all levels.
Excellent. More questions?
I think it's Tim, and then we'll go to Andrea.
Great.
I don't know that Tim can ask questions.
Yeah. Is that allowed?
Couple of questions. My first is, who is your favorite veteran council member? Curious to hear that. But secondly, and it was almost brought up in a couple of the answers that came up, the question I was going to ask, one, one thing that you three have brought to the council, obviously, is a different perspective. You dropped the average age by about 25 years on the council, which we appreciate. But also, you do bring different perspectives in a lot of ways. Sean, you're the only one with kids in the Bloomington public schools. And Patrick, you, you brought up your, your friends living in your parents' basements and so on. So if you could, for just a minute, talk about how those, the different perspectives that you bring, whether it's through age, or profession, or, or your lives, how it, it changes the conversation on the council in terms of community engagement, in terms of the business community, in terms of development, a variety of different things. If you could just kind of freestyle with that, after you respond about your favorite veteran city council member.
I can, I can kick that off. I guess I, in answer to your first question, I spend a lot of time debating whether you are the best or the greatest of the council members. It's a horse race.
Answered.
Yeah, don't tell the other council members I said that. Yeah, and I guess, outside of my service on the commissions, another thing that kind of prodded me to, to run for city council. In my time at Salvation Army, I noticed more and more that the folks that were showing up at our food shelf locations, especially in Minneapolis, were not who you would typically expect. They were either seniors that benefits were getting constrained, and they had just lost a spouse, and it just wasn't covering expenses every month, or they were young families from areas like Bloomington that were driving all the way to Minneapolis to get their bag of groceries, because they didn't want the neighbors to see they needed that kind of assistance. That, it inspired me to, to jump onto the commissions, where all of a sudden I had data to back up both those demographic changes... a sudden I had data to back up both those demographic changes and how folks were just getting squeezed out of the middle. And then looking around it, as you had mentioned, at some of my buddies that, coming out of school, having just spent all this money on an expensive degree, were already starting so far behind the curve. So what I'm excited about is the opportunity to take some of what I've seen. And while city government can't change absolutely all of that or solve all of those problems, we can definitely get a head start on coming up with creative solutions, creative support services that can at least get a conversation started and get the ball rolling. And I'm incredibly grateful to have the opportunity, not only to serve with these two that have such extensive experience in the business community, working with the legislature and especially affordable housing, and especially with veteran council members who have seen Bloomington grow, develop, know how systems work, have relationships in the community, and can take some of these raw ideas and help polish them into something that can be implemented in a feasible way. It's an incredible, incredible time to be serving on the Bloomington City Council. And blessed to have a shot.
Well, Tim, I would say you're definitely one of my two favorite council members that I sit next to. But, you know, I think I would echo a lot of what Patrick said. My experience, like I said for the last, so this is my sixth legislative session working up at the Senate. And so I think the perspective that I bring to it honestly is the perspective of a public employee, of a government employee, and knowing how the processes of government work, how valuable the work that public employees do is. You know, when we have six inches of snowfall, like we're going to apparently tomorrow, you know, those are public employees out plowing the streets. And, you know, when you call because your neighbor's bugging you, you know, that's a public employee that's answering your call. And so I think having that perspective and knowing how much the people who do that work care about what they do really informs a lot of what I do as well. You know, I, like I said, I majored in music education and political science. I intended to become a music teacher, but found I enjoyed working in politics much more. And so I worked on a lot of political campaigns and I've seen the impact, I've seen what that means for people. When, you know, when you talk to folks and talk about the difference it makes to have someone that they feel like is on their side, to have someone that they feel like is listening to them and fighting for them. And, you know, for me, it all comes back to growing up here in Bloomington. And my dad was a real estate attorney. He had an office on 90th and West Bloomington Freeway for 22 years. My mom was a math teacher at Normandale Community College for 39 years. You know, I know the value of this community. And it's so exciting to me to kind of roll up my sleeves and get to work on the issues right here at home. And, you know, and my wife and I bought our home now a little over two years ago. And she was, shall we say, hesitant about moving out to the suburbs from St. Paul, but really has come to value Bloomington as well. And I agree with Patrick. I think having, you know, having three new council members in addition to having sort of the more longer-term folks on the council and the mayor's been the mayor since I was in middle school. But so I, you know, I think bringing that fresh perspective and kind of just, a lot of times I find myself just kind of asking why. You know, why is it done this way? Not that it's a bad thing, but why are, you know, if this is the way, to me, doing something this way because that's the way it's always been done is not always a very good answer. Sometimes it is. But if that's the way it's always been done, why is that? I think, you know, just kind of bringing in that different perspective, that fresher perspective and asking these questions and just learning things. I have so greatly enjoyed learning about the city of Bloomington, the work that the folks here at the city do and learning about my colleagues on the council as well.
There are things that I appreciate about all of the council members. I think they're all wonderful people. And very sincerely, one of the things that I think is great for the city of Bloomington is that we are all able to, in a positive way, get along, disagree, work together, and bring different perspectives to our discussions. And I've seen dysfunctional government in other cities. Bloomington is very fortunate at a staff level, at a council level, to have good working relationships with each other. So I appreciate the colleagues that have more experience that have reached out and sat down and mentored and helped. And, you know, when we have questions, they've always been there and, you know, have never been like, you know, you guys don't know what you're doing or anything like that. So thank you sincerely. In terms of the perspective, you know, I guess two things I'd touch on is the small business background again, which we've talked a little bit about. But I take a look at, you know, our neighborhood commercial environments and, you know, try to apply that perspective of how we could help an entrepreneur, a young family. And, you know, I've, in the last few months, been working with two different younger couples that are looking to open food businesses, restaurants in the city and just kind of helping direct on process, providing advice and things like that. And that's been very gratifying because it's nice to help these young, these young couples that want to make an investment in our community and do something and, you know, have not really interacted much with government in the past. And, you know, I will give tremendous compliments to our city staff that's helped them through the process, you know. I think people sometimes overestimate what we do at the council level. You know, we're more of the policy side, but the staff has been excellent in both of these cases of helping them get their questions answered, guiding them in the right direction and things like that. We truly have an amazing staff here. The other part, which Tim mentioned, is, you know, I do have kids, school-aged kids here. And I think the perspective there is really helped inform park, arts, and recreation in particular, of what we might want to do looking forward to do that. I sometimes lament it, but kids are programmed now. And kids don't as easily just go down to that park, ride their bike and meet their friends and do that. I wish they did it more, but they don't. And, you know, we need to address that. And does that change our thinking on where we put facilities and different types of facilities and how we mass things? One of the things that we had in a study session was about tennis courts. And very informally, the city went out and did a count of players at neighborhood tennis courts versus the larger facilities at like Dred Scott and the schools and things like that. And in their one-week period, there were no tennis players at any of the courts within the neighborhoods. But there were at Dred Scott and places like that. So does that change our thinking of how people use it? Does it change our thinking of how we could put more programs in place and things like that that actually, you know, are how people maybe work a little bit more? And, you know, candidly, parents drive their kids' places now. You know, it's not as much, get on your bike, come back in seven hours as it was when I grew up, you know? Be home by dinnertime. I mean, that's the way it was. It's just not that way as much anymore. And, you know, I personally, I wish it was the way it was in the past, but, you know, I don't think we can change society from the city council, so.
I certainly hope not.
Yeah. So that, I think, is kind of the perspective that when I look at those things of why we might want to rethink for the future our, how we have just our facilities and things like that and not just rebuild them the way they are now.
I know Patrick has a hard stop right at nine. And we do generally try to wrap these up. But I, one more question from Andrea, if you guys can stick around?
Yeah, I can give one more.
Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, maybe it's just as important to get the question out there because I don't think there's an easy answer to this. But a lot of you have talked about changing demographics, the need to be mindful of the fact that we have an aging community, we need to take care of that segment of our population, but also be really thinking about how we attract young families into this community and how we serve them. I'm curious if you think that Bloomington has a differentiator right now that is meaningful to that segment. So for example, you're in the Twin Cities, you're thinking about where you want to start your family or live even as a young professional. What differentiates Bloomington now? And if there isn't a good answer for that, what could differentiate Bloomington for people who are making those choices at that stage of their lives?
One of the things I learned from the housing industry is that people choose location, they choose community when they're looking for a house. They choose location, community first, and then they find a house within that area to move into. And they will compromise on the house. They won't compromise on the community. Top of the list is our school system. We absolutely have to keep a strong school system within Bloomington to attract families. That is the top of any family. If you have kids, that's the top item. You will live in a house that does not suit your needs very well if you can get into the right school. Beyond that, I think it's having the right types of programs for the kids to be engaged in. Because like I said, kids nowadays go to programs. That's what they do. So whether it be arts programs, golf programs, other park programs, all of those types of opportunities. You know, Patrick talked about the difficulty of getting kids into the view and the mini-view and the number of spots and things like that. The summer programs are important. So I think right now, those are really the things that people are looking at. And from the information that we saw from the school board, the community's doing good. I mean, our student enrollment is flat to slightly up, maybe Les can correct me if I was wrong on that, but, which is different than our neighboring communities. They're down. And so, you know, I think Bloomington is doing a good job there, so.
Well, I think in many ways, the, to borrow a term, the differentiators are those sort of fundamental strengths as Bloomington as a community. You know, Sean mentioned, and I absolutely agree, our public school system is at the top of the list. That's, you know, when you ask parents, why'd you come to Bloomington? That's almost always the first reason they cite is coming for the strong public school system. But we have a relatively low price of government. We get, you know, we get a good price for the services the city offers. It's, you know, relatively, and it's also relatively affordable to get those services. And I, you know, I think folks really value Bloomington. I think they see us as a real leader in the metro area. I will say, and I think there, this is perhaps from my perspective, one of the areas where the business community can really be a leader, is that in many ways, a lot of the things that younger families are looking for now, you know, it's not the same things they were looking for 50 years ago when my grandparents moved to Bloomington. You know, there, it's not, you know, I want my plot of land and the white picket fence and all that. There is still some of that. You know, but folks want to be able to walk to the local grocery store and coffee shop. They want to be able to, you know, go to a restaurant and contribute to their local economy in that way. And even to the point where folks are willing to spend more money to do that. And I think that's not always been how we've sort of looked at business within the city of Bloomington. And so I think, you know, to the extent that we can work with you to make it easier for local businesses, for smaller, family-owned businesses, you know, when I bought my wife's engagement ring and we bought our wedding rings, we went to Wicks and Jewelers because, you know, I knew them to be a good Bloomington business. And so I think, you know, it's, in some ways, it goes, like I said earlier, it kind of goes against that sort of free-market thinking that folks just want to spend less money to get stuff. And I just, I don't think that's true. And so I think we need to kind of refocus. But I, you know, I think we have a very active and engaged chamber and business community, and I think we absolutely can do that. But it's going to take all of us working together. And I think as we, you know, as we think about the next 50 years of what Bloomington's going to be as a city, you know, we, like I said, we're the fourth-largest city in the state. So what does, you know, what does that mean? How do we continue to be a leader that's different than what Minneapolis and St. Paul and Duluth and Rochester are doing?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll echo a lot of those points. I think we can't forget that, just in terms of the physical assets our community has, we are miles ahead of similarly situated and sized communities. A third of our total landmass is park space, including one of the most gorgeous nature reserves in the entire southern half of the state. We've invested for quite a while now in creative, innovative arts and culture programming, the creative placemaking in the South Loop District, the funds that we've invested in program here at the Arts Center. There's not a lot of communities that have that kind of a jumpstart. And even, as we've mentioned a few times now, the 53% of the tax base supported by businesses, that's upwards of 20 points higher than any other similarly situated city. So just the thriving job market that we have here is unparalleled. I think, to a point Nathan brought up earlier, it's going to be critical that we are meeting folks where they are, that we're recruiting from diverse communities for folks to serve on our boards and commissions, to have their voices heard as we're planning some of this cultural programming. Because just as much as attracting younger families is going to be holding on to the ones that are here, the more transient rental populations that'll stay for a few years and move on when another job opportunity opens elsewhere. Folks are going to stick around and be invested in a community that reflects themselves if they see themselves in the programming that's offered, if they see themselves in the type of folks that are participating. That goes a long way. So I think we need to, as Nathan has said previously, we need to meet people where they are.
I'm feeling very inspired. Do you have one more question, Dennis? Quick?
Thank you very much. I'm so glad, Patrick, you just made your last comment because I really did want to open up this conversation, although we can't address it right now. We're running out of time. But I don't, I think we would be remiss if we left this room and did not mention the issues of inclusion and racial equality. We have to, in every case of, every conversation, every topic that you've raised today has to be featured and viewed through the lens of what can we do to build a culture that is welcoming across the board? That's one, Bloomington. That's what this is about. And thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I do hope this conversation is just beginning. You all are going to be able to contact these three at any time. If you still want to reach out to Councilman Bussi, feel free. But seriously, I do. I am just very inspired by what we talked about, what I heard, what I learned from you all today. And just seeing all of your faces also inspires me. I do want to recognize, Excel Energy, Michelle, has been just a fabulous sponsor of this program. And we, and as well as Clearway Minnesota, you guys, and I know sponsorships, we're always asking, we're always asking, but it's because of the investments that you each make, we're able to do things like this for all of you. So it's great. A couple of things I did mention that we do have, the next conversation with Kim is going to be back at the Nerdery, if some of you have had a chance to be over there. We're going to go back there. And we're going to talk about sustainability. And we're having the Sustainability Commissioner, Tim Sandry, who is brilliant and excited about how we can turn on the conversation about sustainability within our business community. He doesn't have any answers, y'all. He wants you to come and have a conversation with him next month, May 10. And I just also want to recognize, we have our Board Chair, Ken Vingy, from Kraus &amp; Anderson is here today, as well as Board Member Robert Freeman from Health Partners. And any other board members that I'm missing? And Andrea, yes. Andrea, and respect. And Michelle, definitely, past chair. The support that you provide us also is very important, not only to this room, but to me. So I think that to answer the what's attracting people to Bloomington, Guitar Center and DQ. I mean, really exciting from a business perspective. Thank you. Thank you all. Hopefully, there's a few people that can stay and chat. Thank you.